I call the school board meeting to order. And Ginger, you can take the role. And do we have a motion for either amendment of the agenda?
I will move that we, the school board, amend the agenda to remove the closed session.
Item number 12.
Item number 12 and number 13.
Second.
And number 14.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to modify the agenda to delete section number 12, the closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, in our audience this evening are two very special people for me. It's my sister Susan Savage and her stand-up. And her husband Steve Savage. And they both were former middle school teachers. And now they both work for the California Teachers Association. And they're here on vacation visiting us. And I would like to invite you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll learn. Thank you.
We'll learn.[99.29][99.29](applause)
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a couple special presentations. You're right. We want to observe a moment of silence for Linda Diggs, who passed away on May 31st. Mrs. Diggs was a school bus driver for 21 years in Faukeer County Public Schools. And our thoughts and our prayers are with her family and friends. Okay, there's two very, very, very special people. And if Doug and Wayne, you want to come on up, that we would like to honor this evening. And Wayne Eastham and Doug Larson were the founding members of the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation. This is an organization that has been, we are now celebrating our 32nd Annual New Teacher Dinner. This is an organization that really has supported all of our teachers and our students. Through the last 32 years, this organization has provided over $300,000 worth of teacher grants for teachers to do, take special trips to Europe and do things that really enhance their teaching opportunities in the county. And also, they've really supported over 200 teachers with these grants. So on behalf of the school board, Wayne, we would like to present you in appreciation for your contributions to Faukeer County Public Schools through your service on the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation. And also Doug Larson, in appreciation for your contribution to Faukeer County Public Schools through your incredible service on the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation. And I would like to invite you two to say anything if you would like to.
Well, first, thank you. Thank you Cheryl and Dr. Jack and the school board. This is very nice, it seems. I said to Wayne coming in, didn't they just honor us not very long ago? So if this seems repetitive to you, I think we've been honored now, thank you, twice in the last year anyway. So it is nice to be appreciated. But let me say that if I was to recap very quickly the highlight of my time on this board, I think it has been every year when we do the interview process for the teachers who apply for our grants. And each year, we request a personal interview that takes about 15 minutes. And we have sometimes 10 applicants or so. And by the time we get through with 10 of those interviews back-to-back, I come home always saying the same thing, which is, wow, what an impressive group of teachers we have in this community. Their dedication, their enthusiasm, their drive for excellence has been so impressive that you come home energized and feeling privileged to make any small contribution to that effort. And so it's been a wonderful experience and a great way to appreciate fully what a wonderful school system we have and thank all of the people involved in it for all of their service. So thank you.[344.03][344.03](applause)
I always feel so inadequate when I follow Doug. Cheryl had asked me to share my comments at our annual meeting. They were very brief, I will assure you. Just June 18th, we had our annual meeting, elected our new board members. My remarks were as follows. First and foremost, thanks to each of you here for your desire to help our public school system. As you have learned this past year, if you didn't already know, we are a very diverse county. While there's much wealth here, there's also many in need. There are also many in need. And I hope that this organization will continue to grow in such a way that can help fill some of those needs. I believe in our school system and enjoy giving back through this organization. I attended public schools here from grades 1 through 12, as did my brothers and both my children. I know quality education is available here for those who are willing to work for it. As this organization grows and prospers, which I know it will, I ask that you remember the original purposes of welcoming our new teachers to our community and rewarding our good teachers. Teachers make all the difference. I would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the people who have worked to make this organization successful. You may not have heard of many of them, but they contributed their time and talents to make this successful. And you just might run into one of them. Our founders in 1987, Mr. William Armstrong, school board member; Mr. Hunter Tiffany, former president of Faukeer Bank; Greg Ashwell, attorney who drafted our original Articles of Incorporation and now judge here in the county; Fred Whalen, former president of Peoples National Bank; Tom DeZerga, former school board member, I believe. Was Tom on the school board or a committee? Committee, but also bank president, Marshall National Bank; Larry Olenger, State Bank of Remington. See, we were relying on the banks to give money. Gray Koiner, farm consultant. Then later board members, Randy Farrell, Faukeer Bank; Joe Allen, Fallon Real Estate; Bill Barr, Bill who did everything and who we just lost in the last year, and his widow hat is on our board now. Kristy Ann Zavino, whose husband was town manager of Warrington; Dave Graham, former teacher and principal; Trice Gravett, doctor, formerly here in Warrington, now in Culpeper; Kevin Lee, banker with Oakview National Bank; Mabel Johns, community mainstay; Duke Yell, a former bank president, Marshall National Bank; Joan Broughton, teacher, person who the gym here is named for now; Mary Lieb, in our presence tonight; Sally Murray, former school board member and head of the Chamber of Commerce; and all those who I know I've forgotten. Sally, you could probably name those that I've missed.
Rebecca Hayes.
Rebecca Hayes, exactly. Anyway, let me finish by saying, I'm very proud to have been part of EIE and all the good work it has done. Thank you.[548.29][548.29](applause)
Okay, now we have Aspirations 2.2 update. Dr. Jack?
As you know, tonight's the public hearing for our Aspirations 2.0 Strategic Plan. And this plan is included a great deal of work by a lot of dedicated people. It is the next incarnation of our strategic plan. We're in our fourth year of the last five-year strategic plan. This is the timeline that we followed. And as you can see, letter H, we're almost to the end of this process. And so tonight, we're seeking sort of tacit approval of the plan. It includes those goals as presented within the strategic plan itself, belief, mission statement, parameters, objectives, strategies, and action plans. And as you know, the state requires a strategic plan. It requires that each school division submit a strategic plan. And I've seen a lot of strategic plans. There's some that are as brief as one page and some that are very, very extensive volumes. And that's really not an exaggeration. Some are very, very thick. I think what we've tried to do with this next incarnation of our strategic plan is we've pared it down. We've stuck with the less is more approach. And that's evidenced by the fact that the last strategic plan had 142 goals. And this one is, and of those, excuse me, 132, of those 132 goals, we achieved 62 of them, which is 47 percent. But in this next strategic plan, there are only 42 goals. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I actually think it's a good thing. It's a better opportunity to be focused, focused on what's important, which are the students, first and foremost. The other thing that we're doing through this plan, which is very different and very unique, and it has been pointed out to us, we may be the only school division that's doing, taking this approach. Things are changing so quickly now, particularly in the area of technology, things are happening fast. And it doesn't seem to make, didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense for us to wait five years to write a strategic plan. So what our goal is, and what we'd like to do with this plan, is keep it as a living document so that we're able to tweak, adjust every year. And that's another reason why it made sense to pare down the goals, because perhaps it would make sense a year or two from now to add different goals related to some, to a different program or a different goal that we'd like to incorporate into the strategic plan instead of having to wait five years. So it is different in that respect. And as far as we know, we're the only school division that's taking that approach. Because most school divisions, frankly, they write them, they get them approved, and they stick them on a shelf. And that is not what we're trying to do. Our feeling is if we're going to do this, we're going to spend the time to do it and put in meaningful goals, that they must be just that. They must be meaningful. Our mission statement was tweaked somewhat, but again, the goal is to focus on the student and focus on the learner. And to ensure that what we're producing in Faukeer County Schools are students who are globally competitive, who are competitive 21st century employees and students and citizens. Those are all extremely important, and that's part of the reason why, for the tweaking of the mission statement itself. Strategies, again, are very straightforward. Academic, student support, environment, staff, communication, resources. And each of those goals is focused on, are focused on the learner, focused on the student. The student and parents are the primary customer. And that's something we try to remind those folks who are involved in the strategic planning is, we always have to remember who the primary customer is. And no offense to teachers or administrators or anyone else, but the fact of the matter is, the primary customers are students and the teachers, or excuse me, students and parents. Very important. That's an extremely important component to this plan. So the six action teams met several times in order to develop this plan. And again, the idea was not to bring in folks from all walks of the community, a very, great variance within the stakeholders who were represented there. There were students, community members, parents, teachers, administrators, et cetera, et cetera. The idea was not to come in, roll a grenade in, blow it up and start all over again. The goal was to come in, look at what we'd accomplished, look at those goals which are still meaningful and important, and continue with those, and look at the goals that are frankly obsolete and no longer necessary, and do away with them. And that's what we did, to try to come up with 42, and that wasn't the goal number, but that's what we ended up with, 42 meaningful strategies with meaningful goals that are attainable and that can be tweaked year to year. So next steps are, we're here for the July 13th public hearing. The school board adoption is on the 27th. We expect you'll have some questions for us tonight. And let us know what you're thinking and what direction you'd like us to go. Because again, the hope is on the 27th, we'll have it adopted. And then in August, boom, we start our, we plan our strategic, not our strategic planning, but meeting with those champions and get the ball rolling with those things we want to accomplish in the first year. Because you'll note on this sheet, the things with the blue star, those are the first-year goals. Those are the first-year objectives that we're going to be pursuing in this next calendar year. So they're denoted with the blue star. Want to thank everyone. This was a very tedious and long process. You know, Marcy Kotov spearheaded this. She, as always, did a wonderful job. But all the folks who are involved in this, with the committees and with the planning piece, were committed, dedicated. And I've said publicly a few times now, I think I was most impressed by the students we had.
Yeah.
They were phenomenal and asked really good questions, really probing questions, and really stretched the group a little bit in terms of the way we think. They were very good, extremely good, and really represented the students of Faukeer County Schools with, extremely well. So really pleased with that. And that's it. So I'm going to get rid of that. Or not. Any questions for me relative to Aspirations?
You had some questions, Ms. Grove?
I think we already cleared up one of them. And I think it was something that just missed the editing. But I did have a question on Action Plan 5.4.
What page? What page number is that?
That's 37. Establish a parent resource area at each school. And I'm wondering if there, in that somewhere should be some sort of evaluation to see how effective they are, if they're used, and/or if not, and how much time and effort we're putting into doing these things. And then is there any follow-up to that?
We do not. However, what we've talked about in a different part of the strategic plan is perhaps with the digital age, and most parents are getting their information off the internet anyway, the school websites and whatnot, not all, because lots of parents would rather go right to the school and get the information firsthand, which I understand completely. But I think a majority of the parents, if they need something quickly, they're going to go to the website. So we are investigating, and it's something Dr. Mitchell's working on, we're investigating ways to perhaps have a portal or improve the parent portal that we already have on the website, make it a little more user-friendly, provide more information. It already has a great deal of information, but you know, with those kinds of things, you can never have enough information. You seem like you always miss something. So we want to improve that. That's one of the strategic plan goals, is to improve that. And so perhaps in a year's time, you're right, maybe we don't need to have an onsite, maybe the onsite is just a computer.
Yeah, that's what, in reading over it, it sounded like, yes, that that might be the better option.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then Action Plan 2.3, that's under student support.
What page number?
And I know it's probably just education talk, but did you read that sentence?
I've read all of them, ma'am.
Implement a system of evidence-based instruction and tiered supports to build interpersonal and self-management skills in order to promote social economic wellness, strengthen charac-
Social emotional.
I'm sorry. Social emotional wellness, strengthen character traits, and address social emotional concerns impacting academic success.
The mouthful.
Do what?
Sounds good to me.
You like that?
Yeah, I do, actually.
I think we might be able to tighten it up a little bit.[1154.01][1154.01](laughing)
Thank you.
End quote.
Yes.[1158.01][1158.01](laughing)
We've all been there when we've like written something like that and thought, oh my goodness, what did I write?
Yeah. The other thing is just a couple of typos that I will send you.
Okay.
At a file.
Wonderful.
That's it? That's all your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Rudden?
I do not have any.
Yeah, no, and I'm fine. I'm fine. I got all mine answered out there and there. And I just really want to say I love the interactive format that we had out there. And I'd like to see that we use that in other public hearing forums that we have. I really would. It's just a great way to interact with the public about things that we're considering doing. It's great. Okay, any other questions? Okay, announcements. We're on announcements. The July, oh, scurry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, we do have a public hearing here. Okay, the public hearing for the strategic plan is now in order. And we have only one person that signed up, John Green, if you want to come to the podium from Lee District.
No, I'm sure. Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Green, didn't mean to forget you.
Oh, I know you were.
Couldn't forget you.
Never, never.
Too many people out in the lobby.
That's right.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk with us this evening. But let me just see, what kind of ground rules do we have for this?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Right.
Three minutes for 44 pages. We had just some time out there to talk to the people. I think that's rather pathetic in a way, because I know you want to get the input from the community. But unless you're going to give them time to talk, and I believe I'm the only one that's going to talk tonight.
Well, how much time do you need?
I don't know, but I wouldn't keep you up past midnight.
Well, what you can do is, I'm certainly not going to-
Let me just start then.
Send us all your comments. And we'd be happy to-
And you want to stop me? Hopefully, I'll be finished before you stop me.
Okay.
Okay? I just wanted to, first of all, hit some of these things like the belief, the beliefs that this is based upon. I believe that the family is the central issue to many of the problems that we have in our schools today. And we keep coming up with solutions that are going to try and make that better. But I've seen, and I think we've all seen, that you have kids that come in well-prepared to start in kindergarten, first grade, and when you have kids that come in that have no idea of what's going on. And it's not up to the school system to be a parent. There are policies that go on nationally and statewide that affect the family. If I were on the school board, I'd be yelling and screaming to those people in Richmond and in Washington about how we can better strengthen the family. So when we come up with the VPI, that's just another way of having positive impact on a few kids, but nothing major. And we need some major, major changes to our understanding of the family. Mission statement. World citizens. Now, I know that what we want to do here is get across to our students that this is a world economy. We're not dealing just with the United States of America. We're dealing with the entire world. You know, you can have France trades with Brazil, Brazil trades with Japan, Japan trades with America, and America trades with France. You know, great, it works. It works very well. But when you say world citizens, to me, that's a no-no for the following reasons. There are a lot of people today who believe that nation-states are a thing of the past. I don't believe that. But when you use the term world citizens, even though you mean it in terms of the economy, I think it's too easy for people to take it in another way, as an end of nation-states and the need for nation-states. We find ourselves in a situation today where many, many undocumented people coming across, illegal immigrants. Now, I'm surprised at the number of people in this nation who basically say, hey, that's okay, they just want a better life. Well, sure, I don't blame them for that. But if you have to sneak in across the border, it's against the law. They should be stopped at the border and returned. It's sad, but you can't take over a million people from a country like India, over a billion people that India has, and say, oh, come on, guys, you know, we're the land of opportunity. So when we talk about, again, world citizens, I think what we're doing is we're integrating all nations, especially our own nation. And we're also saying, you know, I can understand why we let all these people in. You realize that right now, in the Economist magazine, they say there's about 116 million people in Mexico, 2015. Right now, we're talking about somewhere between 25 and 35 million Mexicans who are illegally in this country. That's one-fourth of Mexico's population. So I would like to see that world citizens in the mission statement changed to be more descriptive. You know, I think the objective, and it's always been my feeling, that the objective for public schools is twofold. And the first part of it, which is very important, is to take our students and to train them so that they can be standalone citizens who can take care of themselves, they're not going to be a weight upon the other people. They have an education that'll bring them to the point where they can go out and be useful people in society. That's one. Two, we should be teaching them how to be citizens of the United States of America and to fully understand our system, our political system, our government, and our economic system. And I think we'll all agree that when you look around, you'll see many, many people, especially younger people, have no clue about what's going on in any of those areas in our country. And that's sad. And I think part of that has to do with the fact that one of the big objectives that we see in today's schools has to do with what I call political engineering. We're trying to make these kids better. And first of all, that doesn't, to me, seem like something that should be done in school. I think you have to have good discipline, where kids don't just run wild. But you know, after that, unless I get too involved with-
Mr. Green?
Yes?
Why don't you start wrapping up? But I would be happy to meet with you and go over your entire list, and I'll make sure it gets conveyed to the rest of the board members.
Thank you. I've only got a couple of items to go. But one of the things that really bothers me is the fact that I think these things should be talked about publicly. And that's why I would like to speak openly here before you.
Well, this isn't-
Thank you for that opportunity.
Right.
Let me just wrap it up then.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we're placing way too much time on social issues, race, class, and gender, and too little on academics. Communications, when we fail at something, when we make a mistake, we ought to admit it. Compass tests, a few years back, they came out, everyone was embarrassed because they were low. They were there for a purpose, to help our students who were not performing that well on the SATs be looked at by our junior college to see if they needed an extra-
Right.
-boost up. Well, that's not what came out in the public releases. We're looking into it and going to fix the problem. These kids probably would be better off having a test like that to find out how much they're going to have to spend time-wise and monetarily to get spun up to where they ought to be.
Well, what I want to suggest is you and I get together, because I would like to interact with you on many of the comments that you've made, and we could have a give and take. And I would be happy to give that to all the rest of the board members.
All right. The last thing, thank you, is how we grade our students. We still have the SOLs. A couple of years ago, they decided that the math SOLs would be on a kind of a sliding scale to continue to determine who passes. And I think this is still going on. Stop me if it's been changed. Asians had a pass rate for the overall math SOLs of 89 percent. For them to be considered to have passed, this came from Richmond.
Okay, John, you and I have to get together, and we'll go over your whole list together.
Okay. Is that true, though?
What?
Asians?
Well, this isn't the format for you and I to exchange ideas about, thoughts about what you're saying.
I'm just asking for a fact.
No. You and I will get together, and I would be happy to go over all your data with you.
Thank you for the time. Yeah, I appreciate, and I appreciate all the work that you do, because I know it takes a lot of time and effort.
All right. So email me, and you and I could get together.
Email you the issues first, one by one.
Okay, that'd be great. I'll do that. Thank you, thank you. Now, did anybody else want to speak who didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed, and now we will go to announcements. The July Personnel Committee meeting is canceled. The July Building Committee meeting is canceled. And there will be a full-scale emergency response exercise conducted Tuesday, July 21st, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Grace Miller Elementary School. And Dr. Jack and Ms. Bourne later will provide us with additional details of this exercise. Chairman's night will be Monday, July 27th, at 5:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room. And there will be a school board work session on Monday, July 27th, at 6:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room. The August Finance Committee meeting is canceled. And the August, and this is really important to listen to, the August 10th school board meeting is canceled due to a scheduling conflict with the Falkir Excellence in Education New Teacher Dinner. So we will not have a meeting that evening. The Personnel Committee will meet Thursday, August 13th, at 8:00 a.m. in the school administration conference room. And the first day of school, if you can hardly believe it, is Monday, August 17th. The Building Committee meeting will be held Thursday, August 27th, at 8:30 a.m. in the school administration conference room. And the School Health Advisory Committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 2nd, at 8:00 a.m. in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. And the School Support Council will meet Thursday, September 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room. The Special Education Advisory Committee, we're having so many of these because we're not having a meeting on August 10th. The Special Education Advisory Committee meeting will be, will meet Thursday, September 3rd, at 5:30 p.m. in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. And the Personnel Committee will meet Thursday, September 10th, at 8:00 a.m. at the school administration conference room. And the School Board Retreat will be Saturday, September 12th, at 8:30 a.m. at the Inn at Kelly's Ford Dining Room. And finally, the next school board meeting will be Monday, September 14th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Falkir High School Falcon Room, right in this room. Okay, Citizens Time. We only have one person signed up for Citizens Time, and we'll give you three minutes, and that's Marie Miller. And thank you for providing us a copy of your letter. That's great. So why don't you just introduce yourself, who you are, what you do?
My name is Marie Miller, and I am a teacher at Falkir High School. I have been the advisor for the Falconer, the student newspaper here, for the last 10 years and counting. And thank you for letting me address my concerns. Tonight, you are considering some revisions to the student publications policy. I was deeply involved in the process to adopt the policy back in December 2009. And that policy was based on existing laws and Supreme Court cases dealing with student expression. The policy was then revised in 2012. The main problem with the 2012 revisions was that they made the principal the editor of the student publication and thereby responsible for all content decisions. Students should be the editors of their publications, and they should make the decisions on the content. This is the essence of a student publication and of an education in journalism. Thankfully, the current proposed publications policy eliminates the language that the principal is the editor of student publications. But the policy does contain language that is vague and imposes uncertain obligations on students and especially on advisors in telling students how to proceed. Under the section Responsibilities of the Advisor, advisors are required to be responsible, to be familiar with all FCPS policies and regulations. Under this provision, advisors would have to follow every potential update or revision to every policy or risk being reprimanded for failure to follow the publications policy. I am not familiar with all FCPS policies and regulations, but I do wonder whether any other club sponsors or sports coaches are subject to similar requirements. The section on advisors also states that advisors must have a clear understanding of the correlation between student expression and material that may be inconsistent with school board policies and regulations and the educational mission. I do not understand what additional requirements this language imposes on advisors. Must I now censor sound student journalism that addresses uncomfortable topics about actual student behavior, such as drug use, because drug use is inconsistent with school board policies and the educational mission? Does talking about illegal activities that students are actually engaging in, like underage drinking, amount to advocating the behavior? While some topics students address in their newspaper may be uncomfortable for adults, are we not better equipped to help young people if we know what they are thinking and doing? Finally, the section on the responsibility of the principal seems to require prior review of all student publications prior to printing or distribution. I don't believe principals want this obligation since it is time-consuming and may lead to the principal's violation of student First Amendment rights. It seems to me that most principals want to leave publications in the hands of competent advisors and only be consulted about material that is likely to cause controversy. Although the current proposed publication policy is an improvement over the policy adopted in 2012, there are still issues that place burdens on advisors who already must negotiate the sometimes treacherous path of supporting student First Amendment rights in the face of school administrators who prefer that certain topics not be addressed. The school board should reinstate the language of the policy it adopted in December 2009.
I just have one sentence to finish.
That policy was the result of a long process of research and negotiation between all stakeholders, all advisors, all principals, the superintendent. That policy meets the needs and addresses the responsibilities of student journalists, advisors, and school administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Did anybody want to speak who didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay. Okay, board member reports. Ms. Rood?
I do not have anything to report this month.
Ms. Grove?
Just a couple of things I don't make sure you noticed in the Building Committee. One was that the Raptor system is now installed in all of our schools. And hopefully, that information will go out to parents and be, so when you go into schools this fall, you'll be ready with your driver's license when you go in the office. And then the second thing was the turning lane at Kettle Run.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Yes, that's wonderful. I did have a question about the turning lane at PB Smith. It sounds like they're not going to do that until next year.
Next year.
Is that a problem at all?
It's them and VDOT.
To develop, to get PB Smith approved, and they were not approved in time. And so to do that part of next summer, this will...
Okay, but there won't be a problem with buses pulling out, or there won't be...
No, no, no.
Because they haven't, there aren't any changes that will...
Right, still the same. Okay. All right, then, that was really the only question I had. Okay. The only thing I had is I just, I visited the STEM camps up at Kettle Run, and I just really want to say that the projects that the students were working on, very few students were unengaged. All of them were just so engaged in the projects they were working on. And it was really incredible stuff to see the animation that they were working on, the coding, the robotics. It was, and very small children doing this, and it was amazing. So I really want to thank all the teachers who were teachers at the STEM camp, and especially Sarah Frye, Diane Story, and Debbie Embry, who really headed up that whole project. It was excellent. And then the only other thing I also want to say is our 32nd Annual New Teacher Dinner will be on August 10th at 5:30 p.m. at the Falkir Springs Country Club. And I want to thank Janelle for all the work that you guys and Dr. Wolf have done to put that together. And also Mia Grabner, who's on the Foundation Board, all the work you've done to get the letters out. Many letters have been sent out, and I have additional letters if anybody would like to either attend or if you would like to make a donation of a door prize for the event or sponsor a new teacher's way for the dinner. So that's great. And that, so it's $50 to attend, which means $25 that sponsors a dinner for a new teacher. So I have signup sheets or signup envelopes right here if anybody would like those. So that's just a great event that we'd really like everyone to attend. And Dr. Jack?
Just two announcements. Next week will be our Administrative Academy. That'll be Tuesday, July 21st, 22nd, 23rd, at Grace Miller and then Ritchie Elementary Schools. Wanted to accentuate the fact that on Tuesday, the 21st, from 7:00 to 3:00, we will have our first full-scale emergency response exercise to be conducted at Grace Miller Elementary School. That'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday. And we are, Ms. Bourne, and Emergency Response has coordinated that with Falkir County Sheriff's Office, Falkir County Fire and Rescue, Falkir Hospital, and of course, the school system. So we hope to learn a lot from it. We've already learned a lot through the tabletop exercises that have been conducted. And so we're looking forward to that. It will be a long day, but I think an extremely productive day. And I think we might even have a board member, two is going to be participating.
Three.
Three, wow.
Three, right here.
The three women?
Right. How appropriate. So anyway.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah. But anyway, it's going to be extremely helpful and valuable for our administrators and for the folks involved with Emergency Response. It's going to be good all around, and we're looking forward to having that next Tuesday.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, Financial Management Report.
Here it is, if you need to see it.
I looked at it, so we're good.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty basic.
Good evening. Happy for you, the Financial Management Report as of May. We're on track with our last two years. We're right in line with that. Wednesday this week, payroll, we'll be running the checks that will be accrued back, that will be paid over July and August to our teachers. So that'll give us a good indication where we are. It's been a little iffy tracking it because of bi-weekly and monthly, but we're setting our baseline this year. Also, accounts payable, we'll continue to pay for any services or goods that were received as of June 30th through the first week of August. And then we kind of shut our books and start reporting to the state for the September report. I will also note that as of the end of May, food nutrition, the revenue, was back up, you know, catching up after all those snow days. So it looks good. It does bode well for the end of the year. So we'll know midweek where we stand more solidly, if you will. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thanks.
Looks great. Thank you, thank you. All right, Human Resource Department report.
Good evening. Following is a summary from the Human Resources Department. Currently, we are recruiting for the upcoming school year. We've had 148 certified vacancies. 134 of them are filled. We have 14 left open. So 9% of the total vacancies we have left open to fill for the beginning of the school year. So that's great news, better than we've had in the past. For classified openings, we've had 61 so far, and we have 12 remaining. So the list that you have in front of you tonight is actually longer than what is remaining. In addition, we continue these job fairs that we've been hosting almost monthly. On June 24th, we had one during the day at Falkir High School, and we were able to track some good leads on custodians and on bus drivers. So any questions this evening?
So how many new teacher dinner, teacher people do we have?
Currently, on your list is 88. I'll be sending out a new list for 92 because they are the brand-new teachers. A lot of the postings we had opened were internal shifts of existing employees.
So if we have 92 new teachers...
Yes.
And how many on this list are new teachers that aren't filled?
So 92 teachers and 14 new ones we're still waiting to...
Okay, 14.
Open, so 92 plus 14 is six, 116? 106, 106, 106. Thank you, Ms. Grove.
Okay, great.
Any other tough questions for this evening?
No, that's great. That's great. Okay, Consent Agenda.
I move that the school board approve the following: monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, which include the hiring of one assistant principal, 54 teachers, two guidance counselors, two psychologists, one office associate, three, and one secretary, bookkeeper; the resignation of one assistant principal and 10 teachers; and the retiring of two teachers; the revisions to Policy 3-2.1, annual operating budget; revisions to Policy 4-4.1, pupil transportation services; and the revisions to student policies, 7-1.3, 7-2.1, 7-2.3, 7-3.1, and 7-4.3; and the religious exemption 071315.1.
Maureen.
I'm done, Maureen.
Sorry.
You're the only second we got.
I was having some issues with my computer here. I'm the second.
Okay, there's been a motion that the school board approve the following: monthly bills and payroll. Is everybody clear on what you're voting on? I did some reading, and I have to reread this to make sure everyone understands what they're voting on. So I'm going to ask you, do you understand what you're voting on?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So it is, and I don't want to read it all again. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay, Information Items. The Virginia School-Wide Safety Audit Committee Report. Before we do that, Janice, could we, you were going to introduce the new, the...
That's right.
That's my problem, my fault.
I beg your pardon, Ms. Bourne. What I do want to do is two, our newest two assistant principals. I'll start with Kylie Henson, who is coming to Smith Elementary School from Marshall Middle School, where she was a technology teacher for six years, eight years? Okay, I was close. And I know Linda Smith, the new principal at Smith Elementary, is very excited to have Kylie. And Kylie is a proud West Virginian, so she brings that to the table also. And as the custom, if you'd like to say a few words now, the board would be most appreciative.
Great.
Great, welcome.
Welcome.
Next, we have Mark Malloy, who is the newest assistant principal at Kettle Run High School. Mark's coming to us from Prince William, and it's always exciting to steal people from Prince William County. That's always a point of pride with this group, so welcome. And Mark has spent, let's see, five years at the high school level and four as department head. And which high school?
Forest Park.
Forest Park. And prior to that, you were a middle school teacher. And head girls soccer coach.
Head of Forest Park.
Very good. All right. Well, welcome. And if there's anything you'd like to say to the board, this is a good time to say it.
Just from early second.
Yes.
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 Starting.
Great.
Go Cougars. Well, great. Well, welcome. Welcome to the team. All right, sorry about that, Ms. Bourne.
I think that's always exciting when we get new school administrators.
It is, it's very exciting.
We're excited, too, in Central Office. I would just like to say that you have been presented the report, the Division-Wide Safety Audit Committee Report for school year 2014-15, and it's submitted tonight to you for information. This past school year is the second year that Dr. Jack has appointed a school safety audit committee to review school safety components in accordance with the Code of Virginia. Membership of the committee is listed in the report, and there were some changes from last year, but many of the members enjoyed the work that they did last year and did want to continue that work this year. Like last year, this report is divided into three primary safety audit components, which include the school safety survey, which is conducted each year in August and September, and it's completed by each school. Also, it includes the secondary school climate survey, which for the, this report was completed in the spring of 2014 and was done by each of the high schools. So that secondary school climate was just a high school survey. And then finally, it includes the school safety inspections, which are, that we conduct here in Falkir County every year. Some school divisions do it every three years, which is also allowed by the Code of Virginia. And that's done by Facilities Department, the School Division Facilities, the County Maintenance, as well as the school administration do that together. And the SROs also participate. And that's done during the fall and winter, and that was done in 2014-15. The report describes each of these components. It also summarizes the committee's findings and recommendations to... also a status of the recommendations that were made last year, which ones were completed, which ones are continuing are noted in the report. Even though none of the members of the committee are here, I would like to publicly thank the committee members for their work on this committee. They do a great job. They work together very well, and they are committed to the safety of our students, our staff, and the community. And it is submitted for information. You don't really need to take action on it, but I would just open it up to see if you have any questions, and we are going to post it on our website.
I have a few questions, but can we just put it on the work session?
We can send it to work session if you would like to do that.
That would be great. And I'll send you all these questions, and then we can...
Okay, great, great.
That'd be great.
Any other questions in for tonight, and we'll...
I thought it was pretty impressive.
Guys, you too.
Wow. Great.
Great, thank you.
Good, very good. Okay, and revisions to Policy 2-2.3, advertising, sales, and solicitation. Mr. McDonald?
This is interesting.
Yeah. I want to know what the kiosk is.
It's interesting. Good evening. We're requesting a revision, two revisions to Policy 2-2.3. Let me go with the second one, since that's probably the easier one to talk about, which is revisions to subsection 5.1.3, surveys requesting sexual information, and that's being done due to legislative changes requested, and that's already been done. The other part we're requesting is that we've determined that there's some value in using digital on-campus information and kiosk around the schools to provide information for things going on within the school, activities, events, plays, as well as fundraising and charity revenues. And with this particular kiosk we're looking at, there's the potential to also generate revenue through the kiosk. The specific revisions we're making in order to handle the full benefits of these kiosks requires us to change the policy such that it allows advertising to occur in cafeteria, school corridors, and auditoriums with approval from the division superintendent, whereas these areas were previously restricted in the policy. Our intent is these kiosks would be in hallways and in cafeterias, the use of the auditoriums, we would do these on the outside of the auditoriums, not inside. The company that we're looking at, the kiosk specifically, are from School Live. It's a company that does...
School Alive.
School Live.
It's S.K.?
It's S.K.O.L. They've received a lot of press, I would say, in the last year. I don't, do you have a picture? Ginger, do you have a picture of the... Okay. The kiosks are about the size of that screen up there, that television screen that you were seeing up there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they, so they stand about five feet tall. The top and bottom portion are reserved for banners for advertisement, and those are national brands such as Disney, clothing wear, athletic apparel. And these kiosks are provided to school divisions and schools within them free. The advertisers are paying for the deployment and management of them to the, to the schools, so that's where the advertisement portion comes in. They follow whatever guidelines or policies we put in place. All advertisements that will be shown, we have first approval, or first right of refusal if we do not agree with what advertisements are going to be placed up there. The kiosks themselves, the advertising banner takes out top and bottom probably about 40% of the screen if you put them together. The middle of the screen is where all the work from the schools is allowed to go in. It's a PowerPoint template that they use to download information. We can push stuff to it as well. The value of this is it allows the schools to specifically tailor the information for what's going on in their schools versus when this was done on the Comcast channel, it was all encompassing across the division. Can you put it in slideshow mode? No, no, just click on the, see where the 42% is? Down at the bottom, 42%, little screen. Go. So, if you see the top and bottom where it says School Live, that's a banner area for advertisement. What goes in the center is the stuff the school and the division can push down to these kiosks. For the high schools, they may qualify anywhere from five to six to be placed around the school. And middle schools, which is another area where we could also consider them, would probably be one per middle school. The other feature they have that isn't demonstrated on here is there's a little menu across the top, and these are actually touch panel screens.
I was going to ask if it's touch.
So, you can actually, we can have maps of the schools in there. There's some other features that we can add. At this point, it's a system that's evolving in terms of its capabilities. But what we'd like to do is put this on to approval for the July 27th, so we have some time to review and add more questions if you need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
It's okay?
Okay, no, that's interesting. Okay. All right, so that'll be on our work session agenda. Okay, great. We can get your questions together.
Vacation.
Okay, so, any other, anything to come before us, before we adjourn? Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
Move to adjourn.
All right, all right. We're adjourned. Thank you for coming. [laughter][1781.48]